All right, good evening, good evening, good evening. How's everybody doing out there? Good, okay. I'm Brandon Morris and the manager of Community Engagement in College of Heritage with Building Our Future. I'd like to thank you guys for joining us tonight, those of you guys that are joining in person, as well as those that are joining us from the live stream. So we'd like to welcome our six school board candidates. Thank you guys for joining us tonight, we definitely appreciate it. At the work of Rebecca Stevens, Eric Meadows, Sam Ruchnick, Latifah Robinson, John Kim, and Christine Schmeling. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who played a pivotal role in making tonight even possible, especially for our school board candidates, those of you guys that are old enough to vote, and for our youth. And a special thank you goes to the 12 youth that have been part of our Building Our Future leadership cohort over the last three months. The growth that I've seen with these young folks over the last three months have been truly amazing, like words can't even describe. From the first day they walked into the doors up until now, it's just been very special. Especially if you guys know high school students, so many of them have very busy schedules. Some of these kids were a part of the basketball team, student government, to other extracurricular activities. Some of these kids are even at track, they had track meets today, so they're running back and forth, so a big thank you to them. So although you won't hear and see from all 12 of the students, these students do represent Bradford, Tremper, Indian Trail High School and Academy, Harborside Academy, and Lakeview Tech Academy. These young folks tonight, they will display what's possible when you bring people together around a shared result. I gotta let you know that the questions from this evening have been co-created by these 12 KUSD students. Also, these questions from this evening have not been shared with the candidates in advance. So we respect everybody's time and we appreciate you guys for joining us tonight. We will not have time for public comments. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer a question, and you'll get a 30-second warning from Janaya sitting here in the front row. She will raise the yellow card, and that will let you know you have 30 seconds left. And then she'll raise a blue card to say that your time is up. And now, since this is student-led, I have to get out of the way and bring on the students. Give it up.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Youth Town Hall. My name is Leo Ruffalo and I'm a junior at Tremper High School. Tonight's Youth Town Hall is hosted by a group of KUSD students representing Bradford, Harborside, Indian Trail, Lakeview Tech, and Tremper High School. This Youth Town Hall School Board Candidate Forum is supported by Building Our Future, a local movement with a clear purpose, helping every child succeed in school and in life, from cradle to career, regardless of race, zip code, circumstance, or circumstance.
Hello and welcome again. I'm Arianna Irvin and I'm a junior at Bradford High School. Building Our Future is planning to launch new youth-focused initiatives in 2022, including tonight's Youth Town Hall School Board Candidate Forum. Centering the voices of the students who are impacted by those decisions is essential to our community. We assure you that throughout our three-month leadership cohort, we took the preparation for this Youth Town Hall very seriously.
Mr. Morrie served as the role of convener and neutral facilitator during our leadership cohort. Basically, we kicked him out of the way so that it was youth-led. But looking back on it, we sincerely appreciated his guidance from time to time. Tonight's Youth Town Hall will hopefully get more people involved in upcoming school board elections and inspire people to continue their interest in future elections and/or decisions made around what's best for our educational learning environment. Please note, Building Our Future does not endorse any individual candidate. We will now turn it over to Kayla as she prepares the candidates for the opening statement.
Thank you, Arianna and Arianna O'Neil. Hi, I'm Kayla Mitchell and I'm a junior at Harborside. Now for what we've all been waiting for, for opening statements. You have 90 seconds to answer. This question will be answered first by Rebecca Stevens. Please share with the audience who you are and what is your platform as a school board candidate.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to say thank you for the wonderful opportunity with your students, and I think this is such a fabulous idea. My name is Veronica Stevens, I've been on the school board for many years. I want to continue my service because I believe in you, the kids of this community. I believe in our ability to come together and solve the real problems that we all face, and how important it is to make sure that we share our love of education and support our students. So one of the platforms that I have regarding students is I want the board to start meeting with students in each high school at least once a year. We did this back in the day and I found it very effective because sometimes there is a breakdown between the students and the school board. And we do have a school board ambassador, so I would like to challenge all to sign up for that too because you're doing the good work and we need that. So I'm here because I care about kids and education and supporting and doing what I can for my community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Meadows. I am the father of a KUSD student, I have a daughter that's a junior at Indian Trail High School. I decided to get involved in the school board because I want to make sure that my daughter has the best possible education. I wanted to get involved to try to make a difference on behalf of my daughter and all the other students at Indian Trail. I want to be an advocate for the parents of the community who deserve a voice in their students' education. I want to advocate for the students themselves who have a right, regardless of their background, to graduate KUSD schools with a fantastic education. I want to advocate for the teachers themselves who are overwhelmed right now and they deserve the community's support. And I want to advocate for the taxpayers themselves who have the right to know that we are spending the huge budget that KUSD has prudently and wisely. So I want to, I am passionate about education. My daughter is my entire world and I want her to be successful. And if as a community can make these schools even better, that's what I'm going to fight to do. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes amigos y vecinos. Me llamo Sam Ruchnick, soy candidato para la posición de orden de directores de las escuelas aquí en Kenosha. Soy padre en el distrito y también enseño matemáticas en la parte pasada en el centro. Ahora me dis. Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Sam Ruchnick. I'm a dad in the district, taught math at Indian Trail, and I'm candidate for school board. Just want to encourage everyone to get out and vote on April 5th, whether it's for me or someone else. Appreciate everyone showing up. I'm running for school board because teaching last year and the many books, studies, and pieces of literature that I've read on the situation paint a very dire picture. We have 20 years of bad national education policy coming to a head with the pandemic. The situation is pretty dire for teachers and students alike. I'm running my campaign on a nonpartisan, bipartisan, Better Together kind of spirit because I've seen issues that we're facing as too challenging to address for divided. We have to come together to address them successfully. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Latifah Robinson and I'm running for school board because I want to work on the achievement gap. And I realize that our black and brown students are having some challenges around math and reading, mental health, and around learning loss before the pandemic and during the pandemic. And so if elected, we want to make sure that we, you know, provide curriculum that will address once the learning loss, some emotional and social emotional skills, and then make sure that everybody has equitable resources for parents to be able to teach their kids to succeed and to thrive. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Grandmaster John Kim. My family has been part of this to me for three generations. We have been an institution of Kenosha Instructed Martial Arts and they have made black belts from every school in Kenosha County District. I believe it's my duty to serve the well community that has supported me for generations. My platform is Bring Back the Basics.
Hi, I'm Christine Schmeling. I don't have any kids in school at this time, nor do I plan on it actually. But my daughter went to Lincoln here and was very successful. My other daughter went to K-Tech, so right next door. They graduated and did really well. I was very excited about being part of KUSD and now I feel like I need to give back to the community. I feel like parents need a voice. I think our board needs to be fiscally responsible and not increase taxes when we can increase academic success without doing that. I also feel students and families need input, parents, teachers. I want to support those, just the triangle effect of students, parents, and teachers. I'd rather see not so much government involvement in our schools and I think I want to really focus on the unfinished learning that is going on. Some people call it achievement gap, I like to call it unfinished learning on every spectrum, black and brown students, white students. So I think that's where my main focus would be for the school board. And of course, our number one would be student academic success.
Hi, I'm Benjamin O'Donnell. I'm a junior at Tremper High School. This question will be answered first by Rebecca Stevens. With COVID as a prevailing concern, how do you hope to address public health measures in our schools moving forward?
So, public health issues in our school moving forward. Well, I'm going to continue to do what we have done following CDC guidelines. We do this all the time in our schools with different outbreaks and things that happen. There's been many of them over the years that I've served on the board when my kids were in KUSD. And the best thing we can do is follow that guidance that they share. I'll give you a quick example. At one point, there was issues with hepatitis B, I believe it was, and we could no longer bring humane treats into the school. So that was a big deal for a lot of the kids and families, believe it or not. You know, they liked to be able to do that. But it was something that we knew we needed to do to help keep our community safe and strong. And so I will always be looking at what the guidances from the health department and working our best to make sure everyone is feeling safe and healthy in our school system with the least interruption to education as possible. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Prior to COVID, never before have we, the society, demanded that our schools and our other institutions guarantee our health and safety. It's never happened before. My daughter has gotten colds and the flu at schools before. Never once did I think in my mind that this was KUSD's fault. It's not up to the school to guarantee the health of our students. They can't do that, that's a task way bigger than any school district in town. I am very opposed to mask mandates, particularly among kids who are not particularly susceptible to COVID. We can allow them, and I think we should even encourage them, but never should mandate that. These are personal decisions that families need to make for themselves, and that's what I would fight for. If this surge is again, I would not want to implement a mask mandate again, nor would I want to implement virtual-only school like we did before. The academic success of the entire district has suffered because of this virtual learning or this hybrid learning environment that we tried to do in these last couple of years. We cannot do that again to our kids, it has destroyed their academic achievement and it has destroyed their mental health, and I will not stand for that.
If we deal with something like we've had to deal with, first off, when it comes to masks, I think it's a lot easier now to comment on it. And the board had to make a lot of difficult decisions, a lot more unknowns than we have now. That being said, something that I've been opposed to from the start and that I hope never comes back is hybrid learning. I cannot speak badly enough about hybrid learning. The idea of having to teach two classes at the same time simultaneously, one to the screen and the messages are bloop, 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 bloop. Mr. Sam, I don't get it. And they're like, Mr. Sam, what question do you have here? It's like, oh, where do I go, where do I go? And every day, you're disappointing students. Virtual, whether we implemented it, I'm also a critic of. That being said, I think that there are some successful ways of implementing virtual, like the way that different districts did across the United States. New York City did what KUSD did at the start, asked the teachers who wants to be in person who wants to be virtual. And then the in-person teachers were inside the schools, sort of acting as a caretaker role. It wasn't ideal, they got burnt out too, it was a bad situation. It was a bad situation all around nationwide. But one thing I want to avoid is hybrid at all costs and definitely avoid the virtual platform that we have. One that I would like is one that's less synchronous, instead of being there, you know, seven hours in front of a screen the entire time, give an assignment, maybe be like, hey, email me when you're done, or submit it, and you don't have to check in unless you need help, something like that. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. For me to address public health as we move forward is to make sure that we have a timeline in a roadmap that explains clearly the language of if surge hits, what it will look like. And then at that turn, we will talk to leadership and the board will come together to come up with a plan that will look to tell us when we would go virtual, when we would stay in person. The goal is to keep kids in school and we want to keep everybody safe. So we will work closely with the public health department to make sure that we're looking at data properly. We will look at the CDC guidelines to make sure that we're following those guidelines. But we want to make sure that we're implementing plans, one, to make sure kids stay in school, two, to keep everyone safe, but then to make sure that it's a clear, transparent plan that everybody can see and locate and review. Thank you.
Can I ask you a few questions so it's more fresh?
Yes. With COVID being a concern, how do you hope to address public health measures in our schools moving forward?
And to answer this, I would like to say that, you know, I wouldn't rely on our community again. I think we were reacting too much on the national agenda. And then listen to our meta blocks because they're local again. We did not do that at all. And then also, the other piece would be put student mental health just as important as physical. We had a lot of mental health issues that went on and, you know, as far as the board goes, they didn't react to it. We were the last ones to take off masks. And we're also, you know, when we're reacting to all these things, we're reacting to these national things, and it was very late. So I would say that, again, you know, let's think about what we can do for our community, not what we can do on the national level to show our, you know, to bond up to mandates.
First of all, I would make masks optional, period. I also am very aware, I've been doing some studying with the Wisconsin Youth Risk Behavior surveys. They haven't been able to do them this year, but they did last year. And one in two students reported anxiety, that's an increase of 39% to 49%. Increase in self-harm and depression, 59.4% have experienced depression, anxiety, self-harm, suicide, lack of vision. And so I believe seeking and fighting help is an important component of mental health. Fewer than one in four stated if they were sad or empty, hopeless, angry, or anxious that they were, they weren't able to get help. 66% of LGBT students feel they've never gotten help. And if they do go for help, they go to a friend or a sibling. They only go to help for a parent 33% of the time. So I think our focus really needs to be on mental health. I am a nurse, I'm not a mental health nurse, I'm a critical care nurse and a cardiac nurse. But I've been a nurse for 29 years and I know what it means to advocate, advocate for family members, for students, and for those you love. And I feel like that needs to be more of our focus. I think that's about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eric Salgado and I'm a senior at Indian Trail High School Academy. This question will be answered by Eric Meadows first. How would you continuously incorporate the student voice in setting education policy?
That's a fantastic question. We were just talking behind the stage before the meeting how, I've been to every school board meeting over the last couple of years or so, and when students show up to the school board meetings and speak, everybody pays more attention. That's the way it should be. I love it when students get involved, I love listening to the student ambassadors that show up to these school board meetings, that needs to be encouraged. We have the student ambassador program, we need more people to sign up for it, I think that's wonderful. I think there's a lot that we can do to meet with the students more frequently. School board members need to be in the schools more so they can see what exactly is going on. That should be a priority for any school member to get into the schools and talk to the students themselves. I know KUSD has done some surveying in the past of not just parents and other teachers, but the students themselves, that's what would happen more frequently. One of the big priorities I've heard this year from students in particular is the low quality of the school lunches in the district. There's a lot of things happening behind the scenes because of the students outcry of what was going on. So that's kind of a good pattern that I'm looking for to add more issue around KUSD.
When it comes to, I got a lot of policies that I think would help students, but when it comes to specifically including them in the decision-making process of their education, I think it is vital that we include them in meetings in a more formal and systemic way. Every meeting could start with a few representatives, one from each of the high schools maybe, from their SGA's, the student government associations who are already in a leadership position, where each of them gets a two- to five-minute opportunity, even if it's just to meet Tremper, Bradford, Indian Trail, but ideally all of them, two to five minutes, what's going on? What are some of the complaints, what are some of the issues, what are some of the things y'all are going through? Additionally, I'd like to see a student survey specifically for students in response to what's your teaching environment like, what's your school like, what's your experience like? And I would like these questions to be phrased in a way that can be done over time so that we can measure metrics over time. Surveys in general are great when you target them, not just students, one for teachers, one for parents, one for administrators, so you get specific voice and specific feedback from all stakeholders. In addition to that, well, I guess I'll talk about the policies that are going to be student-friendly, but those are some of the leadership opportunities that I'd like to see for students in the district.
I think I want to encourage student voices. One, I do agree with, you know, continuing the role as student ambassador, that's going to be critical. I also believe in student government, that helped me get to the role that I am. I started in student government, was a secretary of my school, and I was able to change some things in my school. But I also believe in helping kids and encourage them to sit on our standing committees that we do have. There's youth that reached out to me and we've talked about curriculum and how helps can impact the outcome. So I think that's the other place, is having students sit on those standing committees and being an advocate there. Also, get involved in community conversations. Those community conversations can help bring issues to the board so we can change things. So I think those are the ways to empower students, teaching them leadership, dedication, and guidance, and what governance is about, but also teach them what the school board policies are and what we do and how they apply to the district. Thank you.
To hear the voices of the students is very important. I would say the biggest thing that we can do is, number one, listen to them. And how do we do that? There needs to be a structured way for them to be on contactless. So student government is another way to do that, and make sure that they have maybe a seat at the table on these board meetings. So make sure that they're involved every time and that they're being represented by their government within each school. Also, make sure that, I know that Eric has done substituting and signing up for substituting also, but for us to go to them and be available to them. And the other thing is just be available and gentleman.
It was very exciting coming here tonight, and I think we all agree on that. This is the first, no, the second meeting where we're all in attendance. There's been several forums throughout the city and we were invited to most all of them, all of us. And here we are, all of us. So we do value students and we value, I mean, we wouldn't be sitting here if we didn't value you. So you're a number one priority and we care, and you need to know that we care. And so forming any kind of government or body within a school is crucial. And that needs to be brought to us so that we can help make decisions that concern you and that where you feel like you need a voice. So I am 100% for any kind of student involvement. I think you should be involved at every school board meeting and bring your friends.
My turn, right? Well, good, I'm glad I'm not left out of this question because this is the reason I sit here today. I don't like to my children go through KUSD, but now I have friends in the school district too. And it's really fun watching them get involved and get into school, their 4K and kindergarten. You know, it just reminds me all over again of my love for what I do as volunteering in the schools when my kids were young. And I was fortunate enough that we did make the student ambassador. I can't remember which year it was that I was on the board, but we did that because we wanted the student's voice. We know how important that is, especially at the high school level where you've had some experience and you have some really good information to share with us about what's going on in our schools. And that's why I would propose also, once every year at least, visiting each high school, every high school, Ruth, Harborside, Bradford, Indian Trail, did I forget something, Tremper. Okay, it's important that we get out and hear our students' voice so we can stay in touch with what the issues are in their schools, but in their lives too. And just making them understand that we are here as a service to make sure your voice is heard as well. So thank you. Great question.
Thank you. On to the next question.
Hello again, my name is Leo Ruffalo and I'm a junior at Tremper High School. This question will be answered first by Sam Ruchnick. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction recently published the Wisconsin Accountability School Report Card showing KUSD with a score of 56.3 out of 100, which falls under the category, quote, "meets few expectations," unquote. While it is true that COVID has affected these scores, what direct steps are needed to address the quality of education in KUSD schools?
Great question. All right, twofold. One, academics through curriculum. I would like to see a teacher-led redesign, I've been saying that, what does that mean? I had a badass team at Indian Trail, great teachers, really child-oriented, great at their disciplines. I would love to have been able to vote for my head department, Janet Carpino, to represent me in the district and work with the curriculum coordinators to say specifically, hey, this is what our teaching staff is doing, maybe the Tremper, the Bradford representative, like, this is what ours is doing. Like, oh yeah, we find a lot of success here. Yeah, we do too. We'd like to see fewer quizzes and tests. Oh yeah, we would too. There's a whole lot with our standardized, prepackaged curriculum that I have opposed to, and I think it would be really great if we could empower our students and our teachers to have a lot more fun while they're learning the material, while still keeping those academic standards rigorous. I had students ask me phenomenal questions. One of them is in this room tonight and I didn't get a chance, well, two of them actually are in this room tonight. I didn't get a chance, both of them asked great questions. I didn't get a chance to answer those questions all the time because we had a quiz on Friday. Sorry, we got to study on this abstract formulae material. So that's one of them. Secondarily, I'd like to see one of the issues, and I'll try to go through this, I have less than 30 seconds. Secondarily, I'd like to see one of the issues, and I'll try to go through this in less than thirty seconds. Behaviors are high. How do you improve them? You give them something that you can take away and give an open lunch recess, a longer lunch recess for staff and students at the high school level, something that they've been asking for, something that you can reward them with for good behavior and take away for bad behavior. So, yeah, those two things.
To assess the report card, I think what we would have to do is take our time and actually look at those schools. Each of those schools have individual issues that we would need to address. So we would have to go to those schools with those ratings, do an assessment, see their resources that they need and then try to find opportunities to provide the resources that are lacking. Let's say if there's math and reading resources that are not there, we want to provide those. Let's say if there's special need resources, we want to make sure that we improve that. Let's say if it's mental health, we want to make sure we provide that. But we also want to get to the root causes of the reason why, those learning loss. And so you want to make sure you're going to set up tutoring and training, mentorship, those things like that. So students can do better in the area. And then we want to also empower our teachers so they're not burdened out to make sure they have the resources they need to teach someone. So I think it's a matter of an assessment of what the schools, teachers, and parents and students need to address that report card, getting to those root causes.
As far as report goes, I think we need to look outside the box. Academics has always been a focus of our high schools. We need to start looking at maybe bringing our kids more into vocational and trade-based outcomes. It is important to have a certificate level by all means and we will still have academic track. But let's look outside the box and see what we can do to inspire these kids to want to learn these things for other career routes.
So this kind of goes along with the achievement gap, unfinished learning, and this all was happening way before the pandemic. We really need to make sure we realize that. We need, we definitely need an academic recovery plan. We have to set expectations and outcomes. I'd like to see, of course, K through fifth is super important, even K through second, where we're reading and writing and math is so important. Our kids are scoring twenty-six percent and twenty-eight percent proficiency at their grade level in those courses. So the focus should be the basics. We need to get rid of all the fluff on the outside here and let the teachers teach. Let them do the core teaching of math, reading, science, English. And we need to really focus on that or else we're not, there could very well be a possibility we wouldn't close that achievement gap. I'd also like to see a summer academic boost program. And I know that high schoolers have to earn credits for a diploma of volunteering. I'd like to see high schoolers go into each school and everyone took four and you had a hundred. That's four hundred students we could reach if we had some sort of tutoring program is what I'm getting at. Where high schoolers, not only does it help the student, it empowers the high school students. Thank you.
So as far as those test scores go, are those are from during COVID, correct?
This was the, it was published by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Yes, this was published last year.
So we do know that many of our students did not test either. So we have to take that into consideration. That can really skew it. I'm not saying that we don't have issues and can't shoot a vibe with learning and growing, but we don't want to blow it out proportionally there. We want to be realistic. So first of all, I want to take a look at that. I want to figure out how many kids were tested, were not tested, what the circumstances were around the testing and how that impacted the test and what our results are. The next thing I want to do, and I always try to do this, is look at individualized plans for our students. We have tools available to us that can be used and they can be used effectively to find out the base score of how high our students can learn at for reading, math. We should be looking at that and then we should gear that plan to fit where they're at and with the growth mindset attached to that. Okay, so you might be here at reading, we want you here. What will it take to get you to that level? How do we inspire children to really get into their learning, their reading, their math? Do it by setting goals and celebrating each victory. And that starts at a very young age. And we can do this in this district. It's already being done in some of the schools, so we need to replicate that because it works.
I don't think anybody in the community would find the DPI score acceptable in the light. And I think that's something that deserves a lot of attention. We as a district are what we spend our time and resources on. KUSD is, for some reason, is being tasked with solving all of society's problems. KUSD cannot fix broken homes. They cannot fix crime. There's a lot of things that KUSD cannot do. The purpose of KUSD is to educate our kids on reading, writing, math, arts, science. That's what we need to focus on, the research and something, not all of this other stuff that KUSD cannot solve to problem solve. But people are relying on this district to do way more. Our teachers are being stretched so thin by being expected to do so many things beyond just teaching the class that they were hired to teach. Our teachers are overwhelmed. Let's free them from all this other stuff and let them teach what they were hired to do. My mother was an elementary school librarian, and I said this in a previous forum. Reading is critical, particularly among our youngest students. We need to instill a love of learning before kids start to see reading as a chore. We need to make reading fun and enjoyable so they see it as their reward, their achievement.
All right, thank you. Time for your next question.
Hello, I'm Ursula Ruffler and I'm a junior at Bradford High School. This question will first be answered by a team from Long Island. Issues with discrimination in KUSD, including but not limited to the basis of gender, race, and sexuality, have been prevalent. What is your solution to these inequalities within our school district?
The question, it was just a little muffled, just a little. I just want to make sure that I'm hearing clearly.
Yeah, of course. Issues with discrimination in KUSD, including but not limited to the basis of gender, race, and sexuality, have been prevalent. What is your solution to these inequalities within our school district?
I think first we just, we have to, one, have conversation about it. We have to start talking about it when it comes down to discrimination or being, having diversity, equity, and inclusion in there. The other thing is we have to start with training. And this is not, I'm going to keep saying it, it's not a one and done type of training that you have to do. This is ongoing that we have to talk about how to create a culture. And this is going to start with something that you utilize in HR. So human resources and leadership will talk about what that will look like and then that will go out to the employees that way. And so for me, I think it would be more of a policy that we will have to, you know, put together about how inclusiveness looks, what does equity look like, and what does diversity look like throughout the district. And that would include students as well. And I think that's where those community listening sessions come in to where people could come in and talk about what is diversity, equity, inclusion to them. And I think that's where we will start our conversations, training, and then continuing to build an action plan and doing the work.
I think we need to recognize what the children are. Basically, they're our children and they're our future. So the other thing is that we have to stop putting labels. There's so many labels that we're putting on everything. And just recognize them again for being our children and our future. Don't give them the opportunity to find all those labels and put labels on other people. And then also give time for them to be part of these electives in school and give them time to maybe even self-reflection instead of these study halls and do, you know, an unplugged time and give them time to either read as a group or for them to meditate.
It's kind of a complex question. It seems easy, but it's not. Here's what I know, our country is in danger of coming apart at the seams. If we continue to critically look for racism in every facet of everything we do, we're going to find it. And it's corrupting our schools and dividing our nation and dividing our people. I celebrate diversity. I think inclusion is best learned through teaching respect and valuing each other. I think everyone here should have cultural representation in the curriculum. I believe that we can better learn through those experiences. I support this. What I don't support is any divisive concepts of being a victim or a victimhood mentality or ideology. I think that's very separating. So it doesn't empower students to go that path. I feel like we need to focus more on the celebrating each one's diversity. I also don't think we should throw a lot of money, taxpayer money, at outside sources in having people come in for nine, ten thousand dollars to teach teachers what this means. I think teachers know what this means and they mainly are able to do that.
Thanks, great question. I'm going to kind of repeat what Tifa has shared with us because this is a plan that I believe in. And we have to have these courageous conversations and we need to have them as community members. And we need to listen to one another and respect each other from no matter what background we come from. There are a lot of students that face a lot of trauma and it impacts how they feel. Do they feel safe in school? And if you're a person, a brown or black person in school, I've heard many reports, they don't feel as safe as they should. This is not okay. We need to look at it in depth and we need to get the training we need. And we have to be courageous enough to have these powerful conversations so that we can better understand how it feels to not feel safe because of the color of your skin. It's not okay. So we all need to work together on that to be able to come together, have small groups, breakout groups, large groups as a community. That's how we're going to rebuild our community stronger and better by being inclusive and also creating equitable situations through training and education. So thank you.
Thank you for the question. I would first like to first say I don't feel that KUSD teachers or administration are bigoted or racist in any way. I think our teachers are the kindest, most open-minded, welcoming people that there is in our community and that should be celebrated. There is a prevalence among a lot of students that I have talked to that feel that they have to self-censor at school. They can't be open and honest with what they truly believe. And I think that's something that we need to change. And I think the diversity of thought is what we should be focusing on. We should be welcoming of every diverse idea or thought that any student has regardless of what it is. And there are many students in this district that don't feel that they can express their own opinions in fear of retribution from other students or from some of the staff. And I think we can't be intellectually honest unless we are allowed to actually vocalize what we are thinking. I also think we need to get politics out of our classroom. I don't think we need to know what any teacher looks politically. That's not the purpose of any teaching is to indoctrinate our kids. We need to teach them the basics and allow kids to explore their own opinions and their own ideas.
Ninety seconds to address two questions that can't be addressed in ninety seconds. Courageous conversations value, especially within the leadership. Want to see them having tough conversations, being asked everywhere from silly and offensive questions to respectful questions so that they know how to respond to it. And they're able to give their teachers a help when a teacher comes to them with an issue that that teacher might not know how to address. Sex and gender studies, the class that I took in college was extremely informative. I learned a whole bunch of things that I did not know. It was primarily based around consent and respect, something that students have asked for before that I'm a big advocate of. I would like to see people know accurate terminology so that we can talk about these things in an informed way while also being told and emphasized, which sometimes goes contrary to what we see in our media, whether it's music or TV, consent and respect, seeing every individual regardless of gender or sexuality as a person worthy of respect. Ethnic studies class, another thing that's been brought up before by students that I'm a big advocate of. I would love to see an inclusive space for our students to learn about our multi-ethnic history, the multi-ethnic history that makes our country great, Black and Native American history, as well as the rest, Irish, Chinese, Chinese, Italian, Jewish, Muslim Americans. All of us have gone through different hurdles and understanding our different histories in an inclusive, respectful, historically accurate space is vital. I think that students would be well-served by this.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ariana Urban, a junior at Bradford. This question will be answered first by John Kim. In what areas do you believe more funding should be allocated and where would you pull that funding from?
I would say we should start with ASR funds, right? And the ASR funds we should put first and foremost to mental health, of bringing our kids back, getting back engaged, getting them back in school, dealing with depression, anxiety, all these things that happened over COVID. The other thing is put that money towards learning recovery. Due to masking, we have toddlers that are way behind where they should be. Also, I think every student has been at least a year behind in everything that we're doing. And then give teachers funds or a budget of classroom things that they pay for on their own. Set them up for a few years. Let's get some, you know, you know, like, I don't know, like, you know, tissue paper or something like that. Just make sure that they have enough for the next few years. Set them up. And then also let's put this money towards labs that we can put like for tech labs and stuff like that for the future. Again, kind of going for the more vocational and the, you know, tech and trade jobs.
So right off the bat, I'm not a fan of ASR funds. This is money that was given to the district in, I think, a sum of about seventy-four million. And that money has to be paid back, not paid back. In essence, someone will pay for that in the future somehow. So it's either our children, our children's children, our grandchildren. So now that we have the ASR funds, if... I would like to see most of those funds go to the unfinished learning or the achievement gap to support teachers have math and reading interventionists to get kids that are critically need to be able to read proficiently and numerate proficiently in those lower grades. That is huge for their foundation for when they are someone like you, a junior, right? So that's where I would focus the funds, to be able to allocate for those donors going towards mainly funds for academics. And I'm not sure where we have put all of that money, but that's what I would counsel for.
Ariana, could you bring that question to me?
Of course. In what areas do you believe more funding should be allocated and where would you pull that funding from?
Yeah, that's a great question and it's a difficult question too because our funding situation is based on what the state and federal government give to us. And we have been at a shortage with funding coming through from the state for many years now. So right now at our state level, funding is available. There's three point eight million dollars in reserves. The issue that we're having is our governor, Tony Evers, has been able to put forward a proposal, seven hundred million dollars for all the districts in the state of Wisconsin. So, but it's voted down by the Republicans at the top, at the top level of the state because they have... because they have their own votes, and they can just say, nope, we're not going to do this, which is really sad because that money would be allocated for special education. So special education is one of the most expensive areas we have in our budget, other than actually employment and health insurance and all that. Because kids have higher needs, it takes more time, more energy, some medical stuff is, it's very expensive. If we could get more funding there that would free up funding in other areas, and that way, we would be able to be much more successful with our budgets and meeting those goals, those educational goals that we need to meet. We have to have the funding to do it. We have to be prepared to break down the budget like Beth and, I don't know, they have done over the last couple of months. So we're making progress, but we need more money in the special education funds. Thank you.
This is a great question. I think the reason why anybody sends their kids to school is to prepare them for further schooling in the future or a career. We need to increase the funding that goes directly towards actual academic achievement. There's been a big learning loss because of COVID. I think we need to spend some significant money on our SIR funds on closing that gap that students have lost because of COVID. We need to catch our students up. That hasn't happened, and we need to do that. We owe it to our students to prepare them for the future. There's a lot of things that KOST does that does not, that does not increase the academic achievement of our students, and that's where I'll pull the money from. It's not necessary for KOST to do so many other things that they don't have to do because it's not actually achieving the core goal of educating our kids on the basics.
In what areas do you believe more funding should be allocated, and where would you pull that funding from?
Thank you. Generally, in a normal space, and not having learned about our imminent deficit, more teachers and support staff, just compensation for our kids, so an increase in teacher pay and more prep time, generally. Having been a teacher last year, I felt astray under the current asks and the current compensation that they don't align. Also, specialized has been historically, it's a mandate that's not funded. We do have a certain list at the state level, we'd love to see that. I feel like it's bipartisan, we can all agree that specialty would be a good thing to fund, I would hope, we'll see. And extracurricular opportunities. However, getting back to that deficit, how are we going to address this deficit in a way that we can still improve the situation while facing limited financial flexibility in how we do it? Specifically with the SIR III funds that are going to be used to, I think to a certain extent, plug in elements of the deficit that won't be able to be plugged otherwise, or any increases in the deficit, I believe, in understanding how that works out. But specifically with the SIR III funds, I think they should be set aside for extracurricular activities for our students, both academic and social, so that after school, we have teachers who are no longer willing to volunteer to run clubs after school, pay them a little bit so that they stay after school and run these clubs in addition to funding the other extracurricular activities, and a teacher stipend. These are one-time funds. So I would love to see a teacher stipend to say thank you to the teachers for all that they've done for our community during this pandemic.
Thank you for the question. For me, that is hard because knowing the deficit in our budget, we would have to definitely sit down with leadership, and we would have to be strategic of what that would look like. But if it was, the deficit was not there, the goal would be to look for additional funding somewhere else where we would go and utilize grants. Or we could pull from the SIR funds. And with that, I can say, address the long-term school plan. We need enclosure, because we know that when schools were closed, there was some learning loss. With education and technology, we know not everybody had technology, so we would make sure those things were addressed. Mental health and support, address after-school and summer school activities and programs to keep kids continue to thrive and succeed. And then the other thing is continue staff employment, because we know that in some areas, you know, there's not enough staff to support everything that's needed. So we want to make, just increase the staff, you know, and diversify the staff. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hello. I'm Mary Kaufman. I'm a senior in a junior. This question will be first answered by a freshman. For virtual learning in isolation of severely affected students' mental health. We've spoken about this a little already, but these paired with the influence of social media and our stressful schoolwork have led to a stark decline in mental health. How would you address these concerns?
Well, I did address all those statistics prior. I think mental health is very concerning. We need to set aside probably funds, it has to come from SIR funds, but then again, we have a deficit. So where does all this come from? How are we going to address mental health with our students? That, that is going to be the million-dollar question because we need staff to help with that, we need outside sources to help with that. Right now, if you look on the KUSD website, you can go to, it's out of Aurora, there's, we've partnered with them for social, emotional learning, not learning, but needs. So the ball has already been put into play. I think there needs to be more done about that, and I would probably work off of that.
Could you just repeat the question?
Virtual learning in isolation of severely affected students' mental health. These, paired with the influence of social media and stressful schoolwork, have led to a stark decline in mental health. How would you address these concerns?
So yeah, it's definitely, we're definitely at a new low for issues of mental health, and I think that everybody has some kind of probably anxiety based on some of the issues we've had to deal with with the pandemic and the concerns with health and families' health, and it takes a lot out of you. So one of the simple things that I did through COVID and that I've seen work effectively with my grandchildren and other children is learning how to take a moment and just breathe and just focus for a couple minutes on your breathing. It's amazing what a great reset it is for your brain. And just, we can teach these self-regulation tools very inexpensively, you can learn them from a call app. There are just different things you can do, but we're not exposed enough to that type of culture and embracing it because it does help. The other piece was just basically looking at the holistic person, and your mind is such an important piece of who you are. We haven't honed that in our society. Depression, we've ignored. Oh, it's not real, you're not cut, you're not bleeding, you can't see it. It is real, it's very real. I think a lot more people have experienced it. So those healthy eating habits, the exercise breaks, if you're sitting in a classroom, taking a moment, breathe, rejuvenate, get some fresh air, some sunshine. And we really do, and I'm sorry, we have to address the social media because it is playing into our schools in a huge way, in a very negative way, so we have to teach how to use it responsibly. And it's no one's fault, it just happened so fast that we haven't been able to keep up with it, but we have to have real conversations around that. Thank you.
This is a great question. There's a very famous study that shows the number of mental health cases over time mirroring almost exactly the availability of iPhones over time. I think that's proving exactly what you said, that social media has taken a hit on the mental health of our kids. Further studies of this virtual learning environment over the last couple of years has also proven to be a detriment to our students' mental health. As I've been substitute teaching around the school or around the district at multiple schools, I've noticed that almost every single student has earbutts in the high schools, and they're looking at their phones while they're doing their work in their class. So our kids are constantly stimulated, nonstop, all day long. There's never a time when there's quiet and a time to get away from screens and technology. We need to teach technology for the future, but we also need to give our kids some time in school to get away from screens and technology. Let's get physical books back in the hands of our kids. There's something tactile and amazing about reading an actual book that is mentally beneficial. We need to get back to that. Kids learn better with a combination of technology and good old-fashioned learning. We need to get back to that. That's what I would advocate for.
Solutions for mental health, specifically for students. Quiet time or meditation period for a minute or two, a few minutes at the start of the day. Many studies indicate that this improves academic outcomes as well as student behaviors. Teacher-led redesigning curriculum focused on shortening, gamifying, and de-standardizing school curriculum. Maybe with the final exams, we still maintain those standards, but we're not left with a lot of unnecessary, arguably busy work to get there. More resources for mental health, but more time and space for students to use the resources that are currently available. I took my, one of my, several of my classes to their counselor or to the psychologist, and there's no time for it. They can go before school, they can go during their guidance period, during lunch, 30-minute lunch, or after school. They don't want to hang out with grownups during their precious few minutes of free time. We need to make more space instead of decide for these kids to take advantage of the resources that we have while trying to bring more in. And lastly, something that students have asked for that I think would be very valuable is a 60-minute lunch recess for staff and students. We might not be able to provide prep or more prep or more pay for teachers within the current deficit outlook, but in Wisconsin, DPA has decided 30 minutes of student recess to be counted towards instructional time. It would not make the day any longer by guaranteeing that every student got their full 30 minutes of recess.
Thank you. For me, I would start with just defining what mental health is and defining it in a way, because some people don't understand what mental health is. So mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also determines how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And so when you define those things for students, it makes it easy for you to come up with plans. I know with one of my daughters, I have two daughters that are in Harriside Academy, going virtual was great for my 12-year-old. She loved it, and she was a straight A student. But for my 14-year-old, that was a nervous thing for her with technology, even though she used technology all day. So what I had to do, it gave her some type of anxiety. We went to the library, we got books, we reached out to our physician just to make sure she was okay. But then I also let her know that it's okay not to be okay. And so think about it with her peers, her peers that heard, she heard things like, "Virtual learning is not okay." And so she was thinking she would not be okay. So we have to be careful of what images are on Facebook, what things that she saw in different social media sites, and you have to be willing to have those conversations to talk through those things with your kids. And before you know it, her anxiety about being on virtual learning actually went away. So I think it's more so, one, defining what mental health is, going to your physician to assess, is it something more serious or just stress of COVID because you're scared or you're nervous of new things? And then if it's something serious, get mental health resources that list, and then we have like PSG resources like that in that school, or talk to a teacher or advocate about resources. Thank you.
I think mental health is probably the most important thing we have to focus on. How can we expect our kids to be academically healthy if they're not mentally healthy? I think that's paramount and what we need to do. We need to give these kids content, strong, focused, disciplined. Also, I think the idea of them being involved in the community is another thing that we want to do. Make them involved, get them away from these phones, make them interact with real people. Also, the idea of setting aside time, again, unplugging from, and put it during their day, a study hall, whatever it is. Make up a system where you can have them put their phone away, and then they have to unplug and then sit down and maybe just meditate, or the idea of, you know, self-assessment. I taught a winter intensive, and one of the things that was very important to me was having the kids sit down, close their eyes, and meditate for five minutes. That's all I asked for. And it made the world of difference as far as their outlook aligned.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Janaya as she prepares the candidates for their closing statement.
Slight change, we have one more question. I'm Michael Rogan. I'm a junior at Trumper High School. This question will be first answered by Rebecca Stevens, we'll just wait at the line. Students have raised concerns about the quality of food served at lunch. How do you plan to address this issue?
Well, we're working on it right now, believe it or not, and it's not an easy situation. And I do understand what you're speaking of because I have kids in high school too, and sometimes the lunches do fail miserably. There's been other issues with supply and demand, as you know, in our economy, it's taken a hit with getting the actual things you want to have on the menu versus the things that are available. So I would say we continue to monitor that, we look at the opportunity, is there an opportunity of the culinary program over at ITA, is there an opportunity to do something more with that kitchen and the supplies and create something there? We need to survey the students, what types of healthy foods can we put in place that will remain fresh and nourishing? Because you have to build your body with good food to be able to learn, and I know it's easy to get hooked on sugar and soda and all that, but we really do need to continue to monitor that and then come up with a structured plan of how we can change that. And maybe some of our SIR funds, those are one-time funds, but they might be able to buy some supplies that would support them. Thank you.
I mentioned this in a previous question, I think this is a testament to the student involvement of our schools because everyone's been raising this question, and the district is working on it because of student involvement, which is fantastic. I think KUSD has been offering free lunches for everyone regardless of need, so we're having to prepare way more food than we ever have before for more students, maybe that could be part of the problem. Maybe it's time for us to stop that program. For those people that can't afford it, make them pay it again, so we have to prepare less food. Overall, I think we need to do a full audit of the entire process from the supplier through the preparation of the food, find out where is, where is it actually going wrong? We as a community don't know if that's happening or what the issue actually is. I don't know where in that line from the supplier all the way to serving the kids, where is the problem actually occurring that the food is dropping? Is it because of the transportation? Is it because of the suppliers giving us bad foods? Is it because of the kitchen staff that are not cooking it properly? Are they overwhelmed? Are they supplied enough? We as a community don't know that, and I think we need to investigate that and let it be known, what exactly the problem is, so we know what solutions to actually work with.
Supply chains have been disrupted nationwide during the pandemic. In reaching out to the district, they confirmed that their own supply chains were damaged, injured, and I believe that they went through at least one supplier change. So yes, the caliber of food has gone down in some ways, and the free lunch program does provide, which is a good thing, provides all students access to lunch, but perhaps having students who can afford to pay for lunch would allow us to go to a supplier that provides us with healthier lunch. Also, I would love to see a 60-minute lunch recess open at the high school level for qualifying students so that students can have the option to go out to the community like I had when I was growing up, like many of the adults I've seen in this room had when they were growing up, and had the option to take some of the burden off of our supply chains and insert some money, if their families can afford it, into our economy, into our local, into our businesses. I would love to see that, and I think it would be a win all around. I know it's something that students have been asking for, my own son, anyway, I won't name the students, I won't call him out, he's in the back there. But yeah, a longer lunch recess, open at the high school level for qualifying students, as well as looking at, looking into our suppliers, possibly upgrade, if that's something the district feeling they want to do.
That is a great question, and that's something that the district is currently working on right now, but that's something that we have to be fiscally responsible on. We're looking at the finances and how that will look across the board to make sure that we can provide healthy resources and healthy foods throughout the district. So for me, I would think we would look at different community organizations that provide these healthy foods, and maybe we can, at the high school level, have someone, you know, come in and educate and work with leadership on what that plan will look like and how much that would be to provide healthy lunch. But this is where students' voice come in, student voices can come in and actually create that plan of what it will look like. create that plan, or what it will look like and what vendors you would like, and what type of food you are looking for, you know? Because what we think is healthy is not what's healthy to students. So we just want to have a voice of what's your ideal of healthy, what type of food you're looking for, and how long that would be. Thank you.
Food is only going to be healthy and nourished if it makes it to the mouth of the students. Majority of what we have here in lunch programs is throwaway. It's not stable, it comes in plastic, a lot of it is just thrown. I say that lunch program definitely needs to have a overhaul, overall. And we need to partner again with our community and make this maybe another thing where we have a great local food scene. So, you know, for example, just even cheese along, go through a thousand cheeses, right? But the idea of having our crews come in and help us with that lunch program, and also teaching our kids to maybe become a vocational thing where they go and go out and become chefs and, you know, food workers and stuff. And also, let's see if we can't do groceries to donate food from their grocery stores. And then in exchange, give them, you know, a tax break in donations.
It's really great to see that your voices are being heard. I think that the board and the school district is listening, which is refreshing, and I think that your concerns are valid. I truly believe quality over quantity, so I am all for able-paying households to pay for food. I think that would save on the budget huge. And those that can pay for lunches should pay for lunches, those that need reduced lunches get reduced lunches. And I also am a proponent for having high schoolers being able to go into the community and spend their lunch hour the way they want. Not only does that give them free time, it gives them autonomy, it gives them somewhat of empowerment, and consequences also. So if they don't return or something happens, then there's consequences. So I think some of that is, provides quite a bit of extras, and I think it would be a good idea to kind of focus on that. But I'm glad your voices are being heard.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Janaya as she prepares the candidates for the closing question.
Thank you, Ben. Hi, I'm Janaya Parks and I'm a junior at Bravford High School. Now for the closing statements, you have 90 seconds to answer. This question will be answered first by Rebecca Stevens. Please share with the audience what author of book, journal articles, seminar, etc. has most influenced your thinking on education policy and why?
Well, that's a great question. I might be a little bit, there's so many things that I read on a regular basis just with my job alone. So I guess one of the things that really has helped me over the years, because I run a mentoring program where I match adults with kids in the school. So I think that that type of building those relationships. So I think that one of the things that we can really give our kids an extra leg up on is having another positive adult role model in their life and understanding how good relationships create good endorphins, not just for the student but for the mentor as well, so even mentor mentoring. And I've gone to a lot of seminars over the years on that, and I think it's one of my favorite topics because I had a great mentor in my grandpa, and I think that intergenerational piece is so important and sometimes so overlooked because we live now in a time where more generations are living in the same space. And it's really important to understand what benefit of give and take between those generations. So yeah, that's definitely my favorite part. Thank you. Great question.
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. Please share with the audience what author of book, journal articles, seminar, etc. has most influenced your thinking on education policy and why?
That's a great question. Professionally, I am a project manager, an IT project manager. So I manage projects to implement technology using organizations from different teams and resources to implement some kind of technology solution. My specific training and seminar that has been most influential to me is something called Agile Project Methodology, which focuses on incremental improvements. And whatever it is that we're trying to improve, if we're trying to improve efficiency, instead of setting one giant goal and working towards achieving that big goal, you break it up into smaller chunks. I think we as a district have lots of big goals that we need to be focusing on, which is great. But how do we get to this big goal? We need to break it into smaller chunks and achieve incremental improvements in everything that we do. Is there ways that we can do things more efficiently and more effectively? Can we get information to students more efficiently and more effectively and make these small incremental improvements, not just once, but multiple times over and over so we can eventually achieve big goals of educating our kids, but we have to break this down? So that's what I would say.
I was in the Marine Corps prior to getting out, getting into teaching. There's a commandant's reading list where every Marine, even the 18-year-old boots, have to read a book and write a little bit about it. I would love to see something like that for our school leadership, both at the board and the district level. There are many books that inform me on the needs in schools. To include A Different Mirror by Ronald Takaki, which covers athletic history. Mathematical Mindset by Bowler, which talks about having a growth of mindset and how everyone can be great at math. The Knowledge Gap, which stresses what we normally call the achievement gap by Wexler. Creative Schools by Robinson, who talks about the value of enjoying the educational experience and how academic outcomes on standardized tests even improve with an enjoyable learning experience. But to answer the question directly, the piece of literature that is most impacted, My Thoughts on Policy, that I think everyone who's involved in the education sphere should read because it paints out the true enemy that we are all opposed to, which is our policy shortcomings, The Death and Life of the Great American School System by Ravitch. Don't know her first name. But yeah, highly recommend a reading list for leaders and The Death and Life of the Great American School System for all school leadership.
Question one more time, down this way.
Yes, sorry. No, it's okay. Please share with the audience what author of book, journal articles, seminar, etc. has most influenced your thinking on education policy and why?
I would have to say I went to a seminar around growth mindset, and I actually have a book about growth mindset, actually in my book. And I'll tell you why, because I'm currently a nutrition administrator through UW Madison School and Division of Extension, and I manage racing in Kenosha County. And what I learned is that having that fixed mindset didn't allow me to grow or to develop action plans that were in the best interest of all. And when you're sitting in that seat as a school board member, you have to collectively look at every last part of the district and come up with a decision that is going to keep the one, the district, safe, make sure that everybody is educated, and then we're moving forward progressively. And so I think that growth mindset seminar, as well as book, helps you to transition faster to be more professional, and it helps you to take challenges as they arise and realize that everything will not be perfect and that you have to just put action plans together, together, work collectively as a team. Thank you.
I would have to say when I went to Korea to get my grad master built. So not quite summer, more of a test. But before we even go into the test, they made you go through five hours of training prior to that, before you could even take the test. And they wanted to make sure that you went through everything. They didn't want to make a mystery out of it. They wanted to make sure that you put on the best show you could by the time you did the test. And I think that's a good policy to have, you know? Why are we making such a mystery out of many things? We should have structure and make things known very clearly, have a very transparent way of doing things so that everyone can understand, so that there's not this leap of knowledge that they have to be able to get.
I recently went to Nashville to a conference regarding parent involvement in schools, just stakeholders in general, just talking about how we can better improve our schools to support our students or our children. It was very, opened my mind to some different things regarding schools and the way maybe a student may think. I also have been looking at McKinsey and Company. They do some studies on the achievement gaps. They do, they break it down to socioeconomic, they break it down by race, they break it down by primary years of code. So that is a very good reference in regards to being knowledgeable about some of the studies that have been going on regarding post or pandemic learning, virtual learning, and mental health. So I have been looking at some of those things so that I can educate myself regarding how to pursue that when I'm a born mom.
Thank you, guys.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Pur and I'm a junior from Trumper High School. We would like to thank Building Our Future and Braden Morris for his guidance, as this event was made possible through his leadership. We appreciate all six of the candidates for coming out tonight and speaking with everyone here tonight and those watching via livestream. We hope we will see all of you cast your votes next Tuesday on April 5th.
I'm Janaya Irvin, I am a Bradford senior, and I'm here to say that the student voice matters. By bringing attention to what matters to us, we hope to elevate more of the Kenosha youth to be brave, be engaged, and continue to lift the student voice. We will turn it back to Mr. Morris.
Let's give the candidates a round of applause. Let's give a round of applause to our youth who did bring the excellent, excellent, excellent. Hopefully you guys enjoyed the night, hopefully you guys had fun with it. Again, candidates, we appreciate you guys. Everybody that made this night possible, again, we thank you. Thank all of you guys that showed up in person, thank all of you guys that are watching via livestream. Again, over the last three months, these students have shown some amazing leadership. And for us to allow the students to lead the way was definitely eye-opening for me. Building our future for the rest of 2022 and moving forward, we're going to continue to be intentional to bring the youth to the table, to lift their voice, and empower them moving forward. So again, thank you to all of you. And actually, I want to bring all the students out here so you guys can see them all together. We're going to call them, you guys, come on in. Excellent. And the other student who's working up there, yeah, this is youth led, so she's been there with the So now with us tonight, because there's an all-county track meet, is Alana Carmichael, who's a senior at ITA. And a junior, I'm sorry, a senior as well, Doron Green, a senior at Lakeview Tech Academy. So those two are now with us. On the camera right now is Mayor Kaufman, senior at ITA. And then right here to my left, we have a junior, sorry, a junior, and I wish I could go each individually and tell like all the things that they are a part of, all their accolades, but I'm just going to throw this one out here because it's most recent. And she's our Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year for this time. This is Kayla Mitchell, a junior at Harerside Academy. Next Next up, the junior, Janaya Parks at Bradford. A junior at Bradford, Marcyary Fuller, Marcyar, sorry. Oh, I don't miss it up. A senior at ITA, Eric Salgado. And if you notice my wardrobe change, garments. This is a senior in high school who already has his own company as well. Then next up, we have Leo Ruffalo, a junior at Trumper High School. A junior at Trumper High School, Jacob Pur. Ban the last name, sorry. A junior at Trumper High School, Ben Ro Oh, I'm sorry. Sid, I'm sorry. It does matter, it's your name, say it, pronounce it. Ben Rodoff. A junior at Bradford, Arianna Irvin. And a senior at Bradford, Anaya Irvin. Just recently got a full ride at LSU. So again, these are our youth who led the way the last three months and came up and made tonight possible, crafting these questions, having some great dialogue. So let's give a one last round of applause for our candidates. And then the last thing, if you guys haven't already, please make sure you guys follow Building Our Future on your Facebook page. If you took any pictures, go ahead and post it and tag and let people know you guys are here tonight. If you're not following us, please follow us and stay up to date on things that are going on in the community and that we lift up throughout the months. Thank you, everybody. As always, be well.